Special Service Committee meeting, February 27, 2024.
Members in attendance, Erin Sherrick, Zion Hickman, Chris Moritz, Chair, Kevin Myers, not present. Called order at 6:00. Tonight's Service Committee will receive public input, review, and discuss deposits and procedures for utilities within Part 9 of codified ordinances. Administration along with Jeff Dunn, Service Garage Foreman, John Ernstberger, Water Distribution Foreman, and Shay Schnabel, Computer Supervisor, will be meeting on Thursday, February 29, 2024, to discuss proposed changes in other chapters within Part 9, as well as proposed changes discussed at tonight's meeting. Since Administration would like to have all proposed 9, Part 9, changes appear in the ordinance, a second Special Service Committee meeting will be scheduled at a day and time yet to be determined to discuss all proposed changes in Part 9. Jeff Dunn and John Ernstberger will be present at the second Special Council meeting to answer any questions from the Committee and public. At this time, I'd like to ask for public participation.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I submitted to this committee a draft for Ordinance 29-2006. Basically, this is a draft and draft only. It has suggestions for this committee and for the Administration of things to look at, dealing with water rates and for percentages, due dates, payments, who's responsible. So the biggest thing is, would be about some things that have been brought to the table is water deposits, okay? I have found out that if I am a consumer that lives in my house, okay, at my residential property, I do not pay a deposit for my water service, okay? And what I mean by consumer, okay? We are all consumers. We either own property or we rent property. Consumers actually receive services, just like gas company, electric company, cable company, internet service, okay? This is the only, as a utilities, okay, to a residential property or rental property. So basically, when you look at that, who's responsible, okay? So that's one of the things you have to look at first. Does AEP, does Columbia Gas go after property owners? Does telephone company, internet service, do they go after property owners? No, they don't. They go after the individual that signed the contract, okay, at the time of service. And that's how I want to say about consumers. So basically, some of the issues that need to be addressed, and I think they're from 2006, I think they need to be updated. One of the things is the water deposit. Two is the usage rate. Why is it a minimum of two and not one for some people, okay? 746 gallons is what usage one is, okay? So how many retired or older people that live in the city of Bussaras or people that go out of town, you know, for the winter or the summer or months at a time? Why is it a minimum of two, okay? Now, I understand the Safety Service Director sets the rate. That's something this committee needs to look at. I think the rate should be a minimum of one. Anybody can disagree, I understand. But I think for older people that don't use 1,500 and, was it just 15, about 1,500, just shy of 1,500 gallons of water a month, why are they paying double the rate, okay? I think it should be on the usage that you use and not just a certain rate. The application for service. I have a copy of the application that the city of Bussaras Utility Department sends out as part of the package tonight, and it asks for certain things. One of the things that it does ask is all kinds of information, social security number, place of employment, previous address, and all this other stuff. But at the bottom of that page, it says, "Notice the property owner, by affixing your signature to the application of the above-named tenant applicant for the city of Bussaras utility service, you hereby become a cosigner and do hereby obligate yourself financially to pay the city of Bussaras and any utility bill rendered by the city which the above-named tenant fails to pay." Well, what happens if the property owner doesn't sign it? Then it's technically not a legal contract. You don't have the property owner's signature. I submitted also a draft copy of a new application, just for, to put it out there, that pretty much states, I'm sorry. Basically, the same information, but then I kind of added a few things. One thing that I took out is, the property owner should never be responsible for a consumer's payment of services, ever, point blank, okay? Why this is in this ordinance, I have no idea, but I've never seen that somebody should be held responsible for someone else's bills. Also, that's why we were talking about responsibility of payment. Date of shut-off for non-payment, I think it should be shortened, okay? The increase of penalties, so we're talking 2006, this is 2024, okay? I think it should be increased. Though I do think a notification to the property owner of shut-off service on rental properties should be in this code. Forty-eight hours, I figure, is sufficient amount of time. I also think copies of the consumer or the applicant for water service or utility services for the city of Bussaras should also ascertain a copy of their social security card and their driver's license should be required for service with the city of Bussaras. There's some other things that we put in here. Matter of fact, I even met with Jeff Dunn and John and had a meeting with them and provided this information to them prior to this Service Committee. We had a nice conversation. We can agree to disagree on a couple things, and I was fine with that. These gentlemen are very understanding, and I think that's why Jeff Dunn said, you know what? That's why they want to now incorporate more things into this ordinance and bring a lot of things together on the same plate. And I agree with both gentlemen on that, okay? So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything that you have. Basically, what I did was, I took the ordinance and basically wrote and circled things and put the annotations to the sides, and that's basically it. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, Shay Schnabel, Billing, Utility Billing Supervisor. So I gave each of you a copy of our policies and procedures. Some, I might have missed some on here, I'm not sure. But when we do take an application, when the people do come in, we are to look for any back bills. They have to pay their back bills before we apply services. That's if the bill was in their name. I will look to see if they have a second person on their application, if that person is living with them, I will tell them they have to pay that back bill also. My application does require a signature. As of now, if the landlord signs the application, they're basically waiving the deposit and taking responsibility for any back bills because they're waiving the deposit. They're not back bills, but that person's account. Erin, if you would come in and sign up for water, and Chris is your landlord, Chris signs off on your deposit. If you default on that, Chris is responsible for the whole amount. If the landlord doesn't waive the deposit, you skip out on the final bill, Chris would be responsible for the stormwater and stormwater separation. That's what they put on property taxes, and that's been, I don't even know how long that's been in the ordinance. I just, I just took over this in June. I think I've been with Utility Department almost five years. So this is what I came into, that's what I'm trying, trying to help you all with. I've just now started going through some lists. I am sending out letters to anyone with back bills that I know are still around and I know the address to, stating, hey, I'm going through my database, found these back bills. We would like you to pay these as soon as possible. I know they used to turn backed bills into collections, from what I hear. I was told they stopped doing that because of money issues. It just costs so much to turn it into the Attorney General's, whoever, we weren't getting the profit back. It was just so little money that we were getting back from them, so.
That's actually one of the questions I had written down. Does it go from the county to the state auditor, or county auditor to state auditor?
That I'm not sure of, because they weren't, they stopped doing that by the time I was hired.
It's called a tax in that one section of it, that's why I was wondering, if it do call a tax, can they send it, you know, from the county auditor to the state auditor to try to get money back out?
Kaylee, do you know that answer? We don't know that answer.
So would they assess it on your, if we assess, it goes on your tax bill?
Yes.
And then, so I don't think they send it on, we just wait for you to pay your real estate taxes and pay that assessment. I think it stays local at this county auditor.
That's what my question was, if it goes farther than that, if county can't get anything?
No, so, yeah, and so like, when we demolish a home, we take that amount and we put it on the taxes, and we may wait five or 10 years for the county or somebody to foreclose on that, and we might be fourth in line to get any money out of that, because we're the, the assessment, special assessments are the last that's going to get paid out of this foreclosure. But the, the, the only mechanism, once it's assessed for collection, is through collection on the real estate taxes or foreclosure.
We do take a cop, we do take a copy of the driver's license when they do sign up for water, and that's, the lease agreements, the application, the driver's license, is all scanned into their accounts, so we can go into their accounts and pull up the attachments and see that. Final bills, we try to get the forwarding addresses. A lot of people do not leave them, a lot of people just get town, so we just get those returned to us in the mail. We have no way of contacting them, the number has been disconnected. Landlords do get final bill letters if the tenant owes a bill. I will send them a copy of the final bill and the landlord letter, which I didn't bring with me. It just states, basically, you have, do you remember, is it like 90 days?
Not sure.
Not sure. I think it's like, they have like 30.
I think it's 30.
I think it's 30, and then Landon can't put it on for another 30, maybe it's 60 days. 60 days for, hopefully, your tenant will pay that bill. If not, then that's where we can put the stormwater and stormwater separation on your taxes. I don't know how long that's going to last. Is that still up in the air with the whole putting stuff on taxes?
Yeah, so it's still in the Senate Committee. Do you have, this is just my own question, but, so if I come and sign up for water, do you take like credit card information or debit card information?
No.
So one plausible thing that we could do is take that information and have them sign that upon ceasing whatever, and we could attempt to final bill that credit card, debit card, or bank account that they've put on file with us.
Right.
And then they would be signing an authorization saying that, you know, if they, and we're not able to final bill within so many days, we could attempt that, I don't know. I'd have to talk to a bank as far as attaching bank accounts, but.
Yeah, we do have a locked filing cabinet down there, like when people used to sign up for auto withdrawals, they would have to give us our, their banking information, and they're locked in a locked filing cabinet down there that we do have for the auto withdrawal purposes.
Right.
So, I don't know about that one. Check into that. So if you're on the shut-off list, I'm going to keep picking on Erin. Erin, you're on the shut-off list, we just did shut-offs on Monday. Erin's on this shut-off list, so we shut her off. The next billing cycle comes around where her bill is due again. She still hasn't paid. That's when we final bill her. Shut the water off, final bill her, send her, say, hey, sorry, if you're still there, you want water, you have to come back in, pay another deposit, pay your back bill. And the only reason I, and I don't know why we do it that way, that's how we've always, I mean, since I've been here, that's how we've did it. A lot of people, if we shut them off, there's a lot that will not come in and pay until four weeks after we shut them off. They finally have the money, come in and pay their back bill. So it does save a lot of paperwork and hassle. Oh, I'm sorry, you need another lease agreement, you need another deposit, but I can see where it builds up, because we do bill a month behind. So I get the landlord's frustrations, I do understand that. As far as rolling anything over, Erin's bill's due on the 20th of the month. She doesn't pay it. Late fees go on the 21st. So when I generate the late fees, late fees generate a new due date for the late fees. So Erin comes in, drops the check in the drop box on the 22nd. She only wrote her check out for $80.59, she didn't include her late fees in it. So that's where, okay, she paid her bill, we're going to let the late fees slide. So when we do shut-offs, when I go into the computer system, we do shut-offs for anything $20 and above. Anything $20 and below, we let it roll over to the next billing cycle, because that could be late fees. Plus, it's like, I just shut you off for 20, for, let's say, $18, now you have to pay a $45 recon fee, that was more than what you owed in the beginning. A lot of people will pay that off next month. What else do you want to know? Shut-off notices, if you get late fees, the day we put late fees on, if we have good contact information for you, whether it be an email, phone number, I can go in and I generate a notification of shut-offs, just letting you know, hey, late fees went on today, shut-offs are going to be on the 25th of the month. Come up and get your bill paid. I do that. A lot of people look at it like, well, I didn't get a text. Yeah, you did, because I can see it was successfully transmitted, you just didn't open it, or whatever. That's why I encourage people, if you change your email, change your phone number, contact us, so we can put that in there. And I automatically sign people up for it when they sign up for water. I go in and automatically click that yes for notifications, so they get that. So they do know, most of them know that they're going to get shut off. Reconnection fees, if we do shut you off, $45. We changed our times here, because our service guy is here longer now, he's here until 5:00. So if we reconnect you before 4:30, it's only $45 to get reconnected. $75 after 4:30, because more than likely, our service guy is going to have to stay over, and that's overtime for him, so we're charging you $75. If you get a tag on your door, it's $25, because that's a trip fee, our service guy had to go out and physically hang the tag, so that's $25. Did you say, wanted something, Chris?
I was just thinking, I just wanted to know if that 7:30 actually covers the overtime for that.
That I don't, that I'm not sure of. I'm not sure on what he gets paid for overtime. We try to go through the shut-off list, once I make it and print it out. The shut-off list, we had 72 people on this shut-off list. And we'll go through. If it's your first bill you got, we will tag you. Either they didn't go to the post office and change their mailing address, or we're just like, it's a common, hey, you know, this is your first bill, I'm tagging you this time, next time, we're shutting you off. Because a lot of people don't go and change their mailing address, they don't know they have to do that, or if the post office won't deliver their mail. We go through the list. If you've never been on the shut-off list before, and a lot of this is the senior citizens, like, she has never been on here before, she's lived here since 1977, we tag their door. We don't know if she's in the hospital, health issues, forgot about it, whatever. We just kind of, it's kind of like a common courtesy from us. If she's on it the next month, then we shut her off. But normally, that tag, they pay their bill. If we tag them and they haven't paid their bill, like whatever I tagged yesterday, if they don't pay their bill by next week, we will go shut them off, just in, hey, you ignored our tag, we shut you off, now you're going to have to have a recon fee on top of that $25 fee that we tagged you. So they do get shut off for non-payment, just a week later. We offer a one-time extension, and it's for five working days. If you are a renter, we do require them to get ahold of their landlord. We've had several, nope, that's okay, and they come up with the money. So, whether the, I'm throwing to my guys under the bus, but sometimes they forget, they look, I'm like, okay, I'll give you a five-day extension. And I'm like, did they rent? Did they not rent? Oh, I didn't look at that. I'm like, okay. We'll go over the extension list, usually two weeks after they're due, and if anybody hadn't paid their extension by the said due date, we shut them off. They have to pay the whole entire balance on their account to get turned back on. Say we shut, we shut you off on shut-off day, you didn't pay until a week later, your new bill's on your account already. Since your new bill's on the account already, and we know that people are already receiving them in the mail, you have to pay your whole entire balance. You can't just pay your back bill. You have to pay your whole entire balance to get turned back on. So that would bring your account to zero. We can't transfer deposits. Deposits are used, you sign up for this address, we final bill you, we take your final bill out of the deposit, you want to sign up at a new address, we're requiring a new deposit. People think we transfer deposits, we don't transfer deposits. It'll stay on your account until you move out of that house. And I do agree, we need to look at raising the deposits, even though I, I don't want to, but with the price of water bills and everything going up, we need to. $180 doesn't, I, I mean, I have one bill here, and there's just one customer, for one month, their bill is $254.25, and that's just one month. And if we would final bill it, it'd basically be two months on that, so $180 isn't even going to do anything for that. I don't know, shared shut-offs, I don't know if you guys talked about shared shut-offs. We have a few apartment buildings in town that are shared shut-offs. We require those to stay in the landlord's name. It's the way the landlord is responsible to pay the bill, so he has to collect his rent accordingly to the water usage. I'm going to Ron Wooster, Indian Valley. A lot of his rentals are in his name. He gets all the bills to everything that's in his name, and he pays them on time.
Wasn't that 1993 when we started doing that?
I don't know that, I don't know that one.
I think it was. Around that time, somewhere 90, like 93 or so, when he started doing that.
So we have, I go in and I make an alert on their account, saying, shared shut-off must stay in landlord's name. We do have people come up trying to put it in their name, like, we can't, and this is why. Landlord calls, but why? It's always been like this. Yes, it has, but I'm in charge of this now, and I want to do it the right way. I want to do it the right way, and they get mad at me. I want it to run smoothly, and I try, to my best, but that's why we keep it in one name, because it's shared shut-offs. If Zion doesn't pay his bill and Erin's living in the same building, well, I'm shutting Erin off because Zion didn't pay his bill, and I don't, I don't think that's right. So that's why it stays in the landlord's name, landlord's responsible to keep the water on at that building. Do you guys have any questions? Ken, you don't have no questions? What the heck? Greg?
Go ahead. Is there any changes you'd like to see made to improve it?
Hey, Jim. Can you come up by a microphone?
You want to share my microphone, Jim?
Why?
I know.
James B., 873 Westbury Street. She's proud. Is there any changes that you would like to see made? Number one. My second question is, I did get a late fee one time because I do wire transfers.
Yes.
And you don't accept wire transfers, they go to another collection agency and they send you a check.
Yes.
And I paid it on the 10th, and by the time it got there, it was like the 21st. Can we get a wire transfer?
That is.
I know you accept Venmo.
Yeah, they accept Venmo, PayPal. The only, see, I'm not sure on our software, because you do a wire transfer and then do they send us, they send us a paper check.
So when I pay my gas and electric, it's instant, it's paid.
It's instant?
Yeah.
And you pay it through your bank?
Yes.
Okay. So what we found out is, if you go online and pay it through your bank to come to us, it goes to a third party. This third party actually writes a check to us and sends it in the mail, where it comes out of your checking account instantly, but we don't get it for two to three weeks.
So, that was my.
I know, Invoice Cloud has been catching those and transferring them automatically. When was, do you know when that was?
I learned my lesson.
You learned your lesson?
Yeah, it was a couple years ago.
Okay, so Invoice Cloud, when that happens, they've been catching that and putting it in like as an auto withdraw through us.
Okay.
So we only have been seeing one or two. It might be new ones that people are doing, that they haven't caught yet.
Yeah.
So I think that issue has been solved.
Well, my water bill's over $200, so I try to avoid those.
Right, yes. Yes. So the cheapest way for a water bill to be paid is cash, check, money order. Drop it off through us. Auto withdrawal, you can sign up through us through auto withdrawal, doesn't charge you a dime, as long as it's through your bank account. a dime, as long as it's through your bank account. I know there is credit card fees for use of a credit card. If you do PayPal and Venmo, there is a fee for that. If you do the online pay, I wanna say they, there's a fee for that too. So I always tell people, if you can, if you can sign up for auto withdrawal, do it. Because it comes out instantly on your due date, you get no late fees, no shut-off notices, nothing. That's the way to go. Anything else? Greg, did you have anything?
Go ahead. We don't gain that much.
Bill Stucker, two-zero-five North Spring Street. I just wanted to know, what happens to the balance of a deposit if it is not used up on the final billing, if you do not transfer that deposit?
So if we don't transfer it, we actually cut a refund check?
Give you a refund check.
Yeah, refund check to the person on the account.
All right, good, thank you.
So I got Greg White, eleven-twenty-five Phil Crest Drive. So in section five-nine fifteen point oh-four, responsibility for payments of charges tenant in a property owner's responsibility, under section eight, it's on page three of the ordinance. In the event a tenant wishes to transfer his or her accounts to another property, a new deposit must be provided unless the tenant has been a customer for longer than one year and during the past twelve months, the tenant has remained current on all utility charges. In this event, the deposit will be transferred to the new account without an additional deposit.
Right.
Okay, so...
And we have that, I'm working with Brian to get that changed.
Okay.
Because that doesn't seem right to me, because why would we transfer the deposit if you already have a final bill? There wouldn't be anything left.
Yes.
So we're working with Brian to get that wording changed.
That was on my list.
Yep.
Get changed.
Yep. So Jim, what I would like to see changed? Definitely deposit, deposit needs to be raised. I personally, don't take this the wrong way, guys, I personally would like to see rental properties stay in the landlord's name. It's just, it's easier, instead of we have to shut it off, turn it on, shut it off, turn it on, shut it off, turn it on. This renter, we might not know this renter upped and left because no one contacted us. So you guys get stuck with a three-month bill. We have no idea, you know? People get up and leave all the time. I just think it needs to stay in the landlord's name. It'd, it'd be easier for us in the office, easier, to me, it's easier, would be easier for you guys to increase your deposits, maybe? I don't know, I don't know what you get for deposits or water bills, but I don't know. We've been saying this for, since I've been here for five years, that rental properties need to stay in the property owner's name. Yes.
I, I actually had an idea about this, because I've said the same thing for forever. Like, my, when I rented in Columbus and, and different places, it's always been my landlord's name, it's in my lease, this much is set aside for your water bill out of your, if you go over this amount by this much money or more for two consecutive months, you are, you owe this much and it gets tacked on your rent, all that's right in the lease, and it's really cool.
Right.
Because you know where everything's going, and they know where everything's going.
Right.
But at the same time, we've got these really cool papers that you guys have people fill out?
Yes.
And I was like, well, what if it stays in the landlord's name? Okay? But every time they get a new renter, they have to come up, they have to fill out the paperwork, give you the lease, give you all the information, and pay a deposit, and like the reconnect fee. That way, there's a deposit on file from the renter to help them, so they can call and say, hey, they have not paid their rent in two months and I just, I am putting them into a, and you can be like, okay, well, they have this much of a deposit on file here, do you want us to use that towards the bill? And they have the say then as to when and, you know, but they don't get that money back.
Right.
The renter doesn't. The landlord would have that, you know, to go towards the bill. So if they don't, if they don't pay their rent, there's a deposit on file at the water company specifically to help you with that portion of that, you know? So you get the higher deposit, but instead of them doing a deposit every time they have a new, every time they get a new renter, that renter goes up and pays the deposit, which would then be on file, so they're paying them in the rent, they turn around and they pay the bill from the rent, you know? And that gives them more of a say as to, hey, I'm calling you right now, I didn't get rent from these people. This is, this is the second month, not rent. At that point, you could do a shut-off, you could do, just like if they hadn't paid the bill here. I mean, it, we could meet in the middle there.
Right.
And that way, it's not them just going, oh, I was completely left out to dry, you know? And at the same time, we don't have all the extra here. You don't have to worry about, hey, we're tacking this on to your bill, because they're on top of contacting you the second they're not paying, just as, you know, more...
Right. Yep. Something we'll look, we can look into. We can discuss that on Thursday. Brian? We can discuss that on Thursday. Thank you. I like that.
But you can't shut water off for non-payment of rent, though.
You can shut it off for non-payment of bill.
You can shut it off.
If part of this is, they have to have their, their, their rent paid because the bill is coming out of that, and he proves that he's got non-payment, now you've got that late notice. It, as long as it's in there and you've got all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, that that's the rent bill in there, it's the way you word it.
We can discuss that.
You shouldn't be saying that, late. If you word it right, it could, they did not pay the bill. Like, we have the lease here on file that states that this bill will be paid by this month, by this time each month. Landlord's contacted us, bill hasn't been paid. So he's still covering his portion, but we have proof that they haven't. It's the same as them not paying us by not paying him, when we've got all the paperwork in line and haven't worded right. That's figuring out how to word it.
Yes.
It's a contract.
How long are deposits on file for? Is it one year or...?
It stays on there until they, we final bill them. You could live in a place for twenty years, and then we'll add your deposit to your final bill.
Then you could get a renter like me that overpays all of their bills in advance, and then when they do the final bill, they get the entire deposit plus some...
I like that.
And then you, you get this phone call, did you know we owe you?
And I, and I encourage all landlords, if you know, immediately you know someone is leaving, moving out, contact us, say, hey, Joe's leaving March nineteenth, can you final bill us? That's why we don't have to wait, Joe never contacts us, so his bill just keeps going up until we do final bill. Just any landlord out there, if you know that your renters have blown the coop, or you know when they're moving, just reach out to us and let us know, and we can final bill. We can't, because, what is it? If you just wanna evict someone, you can't call up and have us shut the water off, because legally, we can't do that, as long as there's someone living there.
As long as they're still living there.
Yeah. We can't do that, so...
Yeah, that's why, that's why what you suggested.
Right, I was thinking that too, yeah.
Then you have to go through the whole process of court prevention, and they can do all kinds of scamming type of things before, and you're dragging it out six, nine months out, so that system is not gonna work.
Yeah.
At all.
I mean, I, as far as shut-offs go, we could do it, I don't want to, but we could do it, if you're on the shut-off list on Monday, you were on the shut-off list yesterday, you haven't paid in four weeks, or is it four weeks? If you haven't paid, say if you haven't paid in two weeks, I could go ahead and do a final bill. But then it's, the renters would be responsible, you know, if they decide, okay, I got my money, I got my tax return, now I'm gonna pay, have my water turned back on, they're gonna have to pay their back bill plus another deposit. We can discuss that on Thursday, too. Change the whole final bill timing if we want to. I can't change the due dates and anything, but as far as the time length I do a final bill, we can look into that, to see what that will entail for me. Anything else?
I had another question based on what Mr. White said earlier, about the two tiers, the one and the two, the higher one, water usage, the lower one. Few years back, I noticed that my mom was still getting billed for, like it was a family dwelling, multiple people in it, and she was there by herself, she's still paying the higher one. I didn't know if, or would like to know if, that's based on when they first moved there and, or is it based off water usage only? Or is it based off occupants in the house or...
As far as water usage or trash service?
Or, or trash service.
So trash service, when you come to sign up, you were single at the time. So we sign you up for single trash. You have to fill out an application. If I happen to see your account and say this has been six months down the road, and you have a usage higher than five, you definitely have someone else living there with you, so I will go raise your trash to regular trash rate.
Does it work the other way around, too?
No. You have to contact us, let us know that, hey, so-and-so moved out, it's just me, or I'm sixty-two now.
That's...
Everybody in the household has to be sixty-two to get the senior rate.
Yep.
And that's just on trash.
That's what my mom, my mom was paying that for years, didn't even realize that.
Right.
She could've paid a lesser rate.
Mm-hmm. And a lot of people don't know that.
Because of that, yeah.
So if you're single, or everybody in the household is sixty-two, you will get a reduced trash rate, not water rate, just trash.
And I did come up here and talk to people up here, and it did automatically for her. So that's one way, if anybody's out there listening, and you're in that particular group, you can get something done about that, too.
Yep. Come up, bring your IDs, and we have a form to spell out, and we'll get that changed for them. Any other questions?
I was gonna say, any more public participation? Because I think we're out of the...
The Safety Service Director is the one that sets the usage rate, correct?
I'm not positive on that, Brian. You know?
Yeah, he does.
Yes.
Okay. So my thing is this, if we have retired older people in our community, okay, that it's mandatory to right now, mandatory, you have to pay to no matter what, okay? Like I said, that's about fifteen-hundred gallons of water per month, so they're paying that extra fee because they really don't use over-usage one, which is seven-hundred-and-forty-six gallons.
That's why it's good.
Okay? That's, that's why I wanted to come back up. Because these older people don't, are not using that quantity of water, but now they're gonna have to pay for usage two, and then, because the sewer rates are going up, so now they're gonna have to pay that fifteen, I'm, I'm an advocate, Chris, okay, so I'm not a bad person all the time, but now they're gonna have to pay that fifteen percent extra on usage two, because that's the way it is set up. That's not fair, okay? Plain and simple. That's not fair to people who are retired on a fixed income that are over the age that they're allowed to be. And that's why I wanted to bring it up, open table, because a lot of people do watch that have family members that don't understand this system. I mean, I've just, in the last two weeks, have tried to learn as much as I can about it. But I think that the utility department and the Safety Service Director should go back and change the usage for certain people over a certain age, back to usage one, okay? And not make an amendment to. It should be based on what you're using.
Then why shouldn't it be, why shouldn't it be like that for everybody?
I think it should be for everybody.
So, you know, if you're, you're not even a senior citizen, you know?
Pretty close.
We'll say, we'll say you're only forty-two.
No.
We wanna bill you for a usage of one, not two, because what if you only use a usage of one? So I think it should be a usage of one all the way around, if we're gonna change it.
There you go. I, I'm...
It's like, I don't know where this usage of two came into play, I have no clue.
It was established years ago by the Safety Service Director.
Probably back in the time when most people do have families living in there, and now we're, you know...
Yeah, 'cause I didn't, I didn't understand why we're charging someone for water that they don't use.
Right.
Or sewer, 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 or trash, or whatever. I mean, it's, it should be, like I said, we're all consumers, okay? We should only pay for what we, what we consume and stuff. So, I mean, to me, that's fair and equal about, for everybody in the city, not just, you know, a select few or whatever, but just for everybody, you know? That's why I said, I, I think that's something this committee and the Safety Service Director and the Law Director can sit down and, and look at this, because the rates are set by the Safety Service Director. Something that needs to be looked at to make it fair for everybody in the entire city. And I agree with you, if someone's forty-two and lives in a house by themselves, why shouldn't they be entitled? I will agree with you one-hundred percent.
Right.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anything else?
I think I pretty much covered it.
Are we good?
I have two comments.
Yep.
It's not directed towards you, just comments for the group.
Ken Long, six-two-five South Spring Street. It's been mentioned at console and also here tonight, and I'm not poking, poking fingers at anybody, but the, the comment that we'll just have the landlords just raise the deposit that they carry, you know, that, that's my business, that's not city business. And so if the city thinks they have to have a deposit, they need to collect their own, and if the deposit's not high enough, which it's not, then it needs to be adjusted. And I, I agree, disagree with Greg White on the amount. It's one-eighty now, that was set twenty years ago, okay? And I'm not, I can't do the math, but whatever the water rate was at that time, the forefathers came up with one-eighty, okay? And at the time, it was probably a decent number. I, I don't remember what the rates were, but, you know, it was probably a decent number. But I would say our water bills are probably at least three times higher today, and our, and our deposit is proposing to go to three-fifty, and that three-fifty is a kiss of death. That, that is not, that is not a good number, okay? So I would, I would, I would suggest that somebody do the math from two-thousand-and-six rates, and then use the same formula to come up with a deposit, and I'm just gonna take a wild guess, it's probably gonna be close to five-hundred dollars. And that would cure all, all those problems with not having enough money and landlords complaining and all this stuff, if the deposit was high enough. Now that's, so that, that's as far as deposits. Second comment to go along with that is, I'm not an agent of the city. I'm not, I'm not collecting money for the city, that's not, that's not my job. And if the city, I, I brought this up three months ago at, at the previous council, if the city doesn't like the way the water's being ran, they've got three choices. Number one, they can get the owner, the property owner off, off the hook, and you'll never hear another word out of me, okay? Number two, you could privatize it, which all the cities around us are all private water. Now I know that's a shock to everybody, but it's true, and you can verify that yourself. You can call Mansfield, Marion, Tiffin, all these places, they all have private water, probably for a reason, because if you're not good at it, you probably shouldn't be doing it, okay? Also, Columbia Gas, AEP, Spectrum, whoever else in town here doing business, they don't come chasing me around for deposits, okay? The water is nothing more than a utility. It happens to be ran by the city, good or bad, but that, that's gonna undo with me, okay? And so if these other corporations don't have to do that, I'm not sure why the city is, is pointing their fingers at me to clean up, clean up their mess. I'm all about paying less money for water, I, I'm, I, you know, it sounds like I'm being negative, which I am, okay? But I also got some decent ideas, I think, to help, you know, to help get through this also. Probably won't be right this second, you know, but when we go into committee for that. The, the simplest thing to do would be raise that deposit. One thing also, I don't, I don't understand the formula between one tier, two tier, and all this stuff, but if, if we, I guess we'd have to pick on the tenants more, but if they need a shorter time period to have paid their bill or get shut off, that's probably what needs to happen. That would help, that would help the city's risk of having this five-hundred-dollar bill after two and a half months of, of usage, without being, be able to get it shut off. And so it, it could be a different, a different method of collecting than just homeowners, because the homeowners are tagged. You know, if they don't pay their bill, they leave or whatever, it goes around on their taxes, but at least they use the water, okay? So they, they can complain, but they, they're the ones that use the water. I'm complaining because I'm not using the water, but I'm still getting tagged. And so if you shorten that, that shut-off period, you know, I don't know if... And so if you shorten that, that shut-off period, you know, I don't know if it's three days, five days, 10 days, whatever the number is compared to what it is right now, that would lessen that bill and you'd probably get their attention a little quicker and they, they'd probably keep the thing paid on time to start with. So, thank you.
So as far as shut-off days, it's roughly five days after the late fees go on, depending on weekends and holidays.
So if a, if a bill's due on the 20th, is that, is that a date?
Your bill's due on the 20th, late fees go on the 21st. Shut-off for non-payment is roughly the 25th, depending on the weekend. And we don't, we don't do shut-offs on Fridays.
I'm fine. But then how do I, how do those bills that you and I talked about get to be two, three, or two months at least and up to six, five, $600 before you start reducing your...
So, once I final bill you...
The tenant.
The tenant, not Ken. Once I final bill Ken, Ken's a tenant right now. So I shut Ken off on Monday. The 25th of April rolls around. Ken hasn't paid his bill, he shows up on this shut-off list again. That's when we final bill you. So roughly you're looking, you're already a month behind because we bill a month behind, plus the new bill, plus your final bill, which could be a partial monthly bill. That's how, that's why they get so big.
Right.
And I was telling them, if we look, we'll discuss this Thursday, if I could, okay, you get shut off on Monday, then I go, okay, you haven't paid your bill in two weeks. I'm going to final bill you. Would you be happy with that? So you're a month behind plus two weeks. And it's not, it doesn't go all the way to the next shut-off cycle.
Well, it's probably premature because I'm never going to be happy paying somebody else's water.
Right.
No way.
Right.
Okay? I'm just, I'm just going to...
But it would, it would cut down on the amount of what their bill is going to be.
If the amount was cut down and the deposit was higher, as I suggested, I'll bet the two would probably take care of each other. That, that's where the problem is. It's a 20-year-old, we're working with 20-year-olds.
And just know that if I final bill it in two weeks, this person, hey, I want to pay my bill, I got money now. Okay, great, you need to pay this. I need another deposit. I need another lease agreement. I need another application filled out.
That's, that's, I cover you guys' money.
Okay. I just want to make the landlords know that they're going to come back to you for all this information again, just to make you guys aware of this.
Okay.
Okay? But we'll look into that on Thursday.
That'd be good.
I got one more question. I'll get up and say it, Chris. Greg White, 1125 Hill Chris Drive. The people that already have a deposit, can we increase that if we're going to change these rules? Can we add to where they have to pay to the current deposit to cover the cost? That's a, that's a, that's a question for you, Mr. Law Director. Can we, can we put in this ordinance, and when we're changing all this stuff, can we tell them, hey, you're going to have to pay X amount of dollars more to up the ante on these deposits because this is the new deposit? Can we make them pay for that or add that to their bill to where they're up to this five, whatever five, $600 deposit is, okay? Can we put that in this ordinance or not? To, and like Ken said, to cover these, cover this cost so the landlord doesn't get basically taken to the cleaners if someone skips town?
I don't know, but we'll see.
And on that, if that was something possible to do, could it be done over time and not hit with one big thing at one time, so much a month, until that deposit's, if that's the route we decided to go?
Right. So if, yeah, if you're at 180 now and you bump it up to 380, $50 a month for...
But you have, you guys have no idea what it takes to put a deposit on an account. That's... Yeah, really. You have no idea what it takes to put a deposit on an account. My suggestion is, if we do pass the deposit raise, that we need to leave, whoever has paid a deposit, leave as is going forward, say April 1st, whatever. Your deposit is going to be this now. I'm going to tell you this, guys, right now, dealing with everybody every day paying deposits, 180 right now, there's a lot of people that can't pay the 180 deposit. So there's, there's going to be issues, a lot of issues. I can see that. And I, I mean, I agree that the deposit needs to be raised, but people can't afford it. That's my two cents. Are we good?
Yeah, I have another comment, just...
Okay. I'll let you have it.
Thank you. When this thing passed in 2006 and we were sold on the idea of how great it's going to be, $180 deposit and all this stuff, part of that was how they're, they're going to use that deposit to lessen the load from a final bill for the landlord, okay? Well, that's crap, okay? Because the first thing they, you know, first thing they do is apply that, and that's not a lick on anybody in the office, but it's just, it's the rules. First thing they do is that $180 deposit comes off the water side. And we, we just heard that, you know, I get stuck with whatever the bill is, the final bill for the sewer side. Well, if they want to do this right for people that live here and work here and rent property here, it should come off, it should come off my side first, okay? And then the balance on the water side. And if it doesn't cover it all, oh, well, Sadiq Sars, you took, you didn't do your thing. Okay, now it's, now they got, they've got me, you know, they take it off the water side because I don't get, I don't get stuck with that part. I get stuck with sewer and it, it's stacked. It's not, it's not, it's not a good system. So I'm hoping the committee will be able to address that also.
I also know from when I was the previous landlord back in the early 90s, and I, you guys probably know this, too, if you have apartments that are not split up yet as far as the water goes, you got one tenant, let's say you have a four unit, and you have one tenant just walks out and leaves, just for a spike, then you just leave the water running. You don't know how long that water's going to be running. You don't know if the, you know, if the tenant skipped out, how long they've been gone. That water just running, the landlord's really going to get hit with a huge, huge, huge bill at the end of that.
The water department does have some sort of track on some of that, though.
As far as...
Like running water. So if Chris has a four-person unit and all of a sudden your usage spikes, because they showed up at my office and said, you guys got something leaking, which is kind of cool.
So when I do the, when I download the meters that the guys go out and read the meters with, I download them in my office and I go through and if I see a high bill, extremely high bill, I will tag your door. There's no fee for that because it's a courtesy. Hey, you need to check for leaks, something is going on. We will tag your door.
That'd be landlords and tenants?
If it's in the tenant's name, it goes to the tenant.
And if they skipped?
Right. Right. We do have leak protection. I don't know if everybody knows that. It's automatically on your bill, it's $110 a month. If you do have a high bill with a leak, you can call the number, file a claim, and they will pay up to $1,000 once a year on a leak bill.
Now, is leak protection mandatory?
No, you do have the option to opt out, but you, they would have to call the number on the pamphlet that we give them to opt out of it.